Yes. Okay, Mr. Hootson, may I have a roll call, please? Don, you're muted.
Yep. President Penoyer.
Present.
Commissioner Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner Duckett.
Here.
Town Administrator Carl Snyder.
Here.
Police Chief Chief Burris.
Here.
Public Works Superintendent Darnell Bond.
Here.
Finance HR William Morgan. Town Clerk John Hootson, here.
Okay, please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I would like to make a motion during this session to bring the closed session to an end. We ended with a closed session at the last meeting. I, uh, the statement is being made by Linda Penoyer, Mayor, Town of Upper Marlboro. May I have a second?
Um, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think we all said aye.
Okay, I only heard two. Okay. Now that, now we can open a new session. And I bring this session open. This is a statement of what, uh, is summary, and I will read into the statement on August 10th, approximately 9:15. Uh, location, Town of Upper Marlboro Virtual Meeting, closed under annotated code 3-305B1 to discuss appoint, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, that the motion compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, any other personnel matters that affects one or more specific individuals. Uh, we did have a vote. Those who voted were the, uh, Commissioner Penoyer, Commissioner Franklin, Commissioner Duckett. It was a unanimous, uh, vote of three. And those in attendance were the three Commissioners, Penoyer, Franklin, and Duckett. There were three recorded, recorded votes, and the topic was personnel. And there, other than that, there was nothing else discussed. Now, we can go, we are closed, and we are reopened, and we will go on to our first discussion item, which is annexation resolution 01 dash 2021. Mr. Hootson, if you would, please.
A resolution to, oh, make sure I'm unmuted, unmuted, yeah. A resolution to approve the annexation of approximately X parcels lots of land consisting of an annexation area of 189.08 acres of land, more or less located in the third assessment district of Prince George's County, and located generally north and east of the present corporate limits of the Town of Upper Marlboro, including land situated north, south of blank, bounded by or straddling blank into the corporate territory of the Town of Upper Marlboro, as more fully described in this resolution, providing for the terms and conditions of the annexation to the Town of Upper Marlboro, amending the charter of the Town of Upper Marlboro for the purposes of including the annexed property within the legal descriptions and plaques depicting the corporate limits of the town, and generally all matters related to said annexation.
Okay, it is now open for discussion. Kyle, do you want to provide some information?
Absolutely. Uh, there's been a couple of updates, uh, since our last meeting. Um, as you can see, the resolution is currently still incomplete, um, Town Attorney Best. We just got the meets and bounds back. Thank you, John. I was gonna ask for that. We just got the meets and bounds back um, last week from the survey firm, finally, and then we just got the map you see on the screen, um, from the survey firm on Monday. I'm a little bit behind schedule. Um, and while we got the meets and bounds, I was able to sit down with Attorney Best and go through the, uh, pretty much in detail, the annexation, make sure all the Ts were crossed, um, and Is were dotted, and, uh, one issue did pop up, um, the fact that you, we are legally allowed to annex two separate portions at once. Um, but he did point to a court case, uh, with Burl and Maryland, in which the state, um, ruled that you had to have equal consent from both sides. Um, so, which we do for landmass easy, um, but there is an issue with consent in phase two, the West annexation, um, specifically along Valley Lane. So I know the mayor's gonna, uh, go speak with some of the residents and, uh, because we, we kind of made a push, um, there was some initial resistance. Um, so we're gonna speak to them again. There are some options on the table. See if they will come in, um, worst case scenario, we'll just remove Valley Lane from the annexation moving forward, um, which will be a hit, um, but we can pull them in, in a future annexation with more consent, or if we have a chance to speak with those residents. Um, and so the survey firm just said, go ahead and let them know what we choose to do. They can quickly alter the map. And then we'll be fully set to go. Um, now there are only, in annexation phase two, there are only three houses with registered voters in it, um, four total, uh, phase two, but one that's currently vacant. It's that first house when you get off Route 4 with the chain across it, the entrance. Um, but we are all good to go for phase three. We have, uh, more than enough consent on the property side, uh, because we had a large amount of commercial property sign in, and on the west side, we had a large amount of landowners sign in, including the, uh, Providence St. John's Baptist Church, which technically their consent doesn't count because they're a nonprofit, but it's good to get their, their approval anyways in doing that. Um, so that's where we stand with the annexation. I apologize for that, to that technical delay, and, um, I was hoping to go through it with Attorney Best sooner in detail, but it was hard to do that without meets and bounds, and now the map. Um, but I have been in, also been in contact with the county execs office, because I promised them updates after the, uh, showplace arena issue where their, their notice was sat on someone's desk at the new CAB building. So I've been in constant contact with the, uh, county execs municipal liaison, um, make sure she's gonna be invited to any future hearings. Um, so once we get everything settled, we're gonna go ahead and schedule a resolution introduction date, um, and in which case Attorney Best is gonna finish both this resolution and the annexation plan. So it's two separate documents that he has to complete, and both of those will go to the county, the Maryland Planning Department, Park and Planning, and the, uh, Prince George's County Council, um, and then we'll publish the hearing notice for four consecutive weeks, and, uh, then we hold the hearing, and it's enacted. Public hearing day, it has to be 15 days less than the final, and then 45 days after the board, uh, votes on it, it becomes final. Um, so we can't nail down the timeline, so we get the, that's one little issue corrected on the map. Um, but once we get that corrected, we hope to move it forward quickly. Um, so we should have an idea of which direction we're going by the end of this week. Um, is what it sounds like. Correct, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. I'll, I'll take any questions from the board. I know that may have been a little bit of information. It's, but if, if makes everyone feel better, Attorney Best did reemphasize too, because he probably sound, heard out, not stressed I was, but kind of up to his, like, this is a major hall of an annexation. He said this is one of the larger ones he's ever done. Um, normally, it's only 20 properties at a time. We're doing 120. And the fact that we have such a strong consent rate, um, for properties is unprecedented. Normally municipalities, it's impossible to annex commercial properties, but we're the opposite for some reason. Um, so it is, he said it is a significant lift, um, especially for a municipality our size. So that, I guess that made me feel a little bit better, and I hope it lets everyone else feel a bit better, too.
We appreciate you, Kyle.
Okay.
Absolutely. I know how much work you have put in.
We're so close, and I mean.
We are so close.
Um, yeah, so that's, that is where we are at.
Do I have any other questions for, um, regarding the annexation at this point in time?
This is Patty?
Yes.
I'm just looking at the holes. What's with the holes?
I didn't like their Patty. We tried to fill them. Um, Kyle and Darnell and I went door to door trying to fill them. But it didn't work out.
Oh, they're not interested?
They're not interested. They weren't home. Um, pretty much what all that open space up there is, is unimproved land, um, with plans for houses to be built.
Okay. And, uh,
yeah.
Those little houses there, they, like, in that space where there's like a gap, like it goes skinny and goes out. Those people don't own the property and aren't registered voters. So getting them in is like difficult because we would have to get their property owners. Um, and that was not happening. So.
Yeah, property owners who don't live on site technically don't sign into annexation because they,
Right.
they personally have no benefit in it, even though their tenants will see an improvement in services and whatnot. Um, so that, yeah, that, thank you for me. That, that was the issue for, uh, Chelsea Lane and parts of 202, and then up there on Crescent Drive.
Yeah, I just, the, the holes were obvious.
Yeah. I had the same action you did, Patty.
And it kind of throws off those big swatches of kind of unimproved land, too, to the north as well. But the goal is, it will, it'll get filled out. Um, so.
The goal is to show them the benefit overall over time, and they'll be asking. Which I think they will.
One other question. How is this, um, how's this gonna affect our tax base?
It will greatly improve the tax base because, uh, a large, the, a large part of it, I want to say around 60% is commercial, which has a higher tax base than residential anyways. Um, which is why it's usually surprising that the commercial, like, 84 lumber signed in in a heartbeat. And a lot of other large commercial, probably all the AutoZone spots down there signed in as well. Um, but the big thing for them was the police department. Um, and then we're already, we're in, while we're out, and I was able to talk to a lot of the property owners, just the issues they're having. There's no sidewalks out there. There's, they also have already engaged state highway on sidewalk construction out there because they had no plans for, no one had ever asked them for sidewalks out there. Um, so it's just little things like that, that I guess really impressed them, that us as a town are able to assist them with.
I see we're backing up to Ballmore, uh, Ball, Ballmore, whatever that is. Um, is there an intention to include them at some point? Have they reached out to you all?
Not yet. We've been in discussion, um, with Beechtree to the north. I don't think we've spoken to anyone with Valmore directly. Um, but there is an obstacle between us and Valmore, and that is a party mansion. Um,
A what?
How nicely put, Kyle. How nicely put.
You didn't hear about the, the beginning of the pandemic.
Hmm.
It's the, uh, the mansion that has all the parties that was having all the issues and stuff.
Okay.
So we weren't in a huge rush to, to bring them in. Um, but it, it'd be inevitable if Valmore wanted to come in, of course, but.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Events mansion. Yes, thank you, Darrell.
That was definitely more diplomatic, Darrell. But we love Kyle anyway. He's worked really, really hard on this, and we appreciate him.
Yep. We'll get there. We'll get across the finish line.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we will keep everyone updated. And the next item on the agenda is the election ordinance.
Um, so John and I can tag team. Uh, all the, uh, commissioners should have gotten a binder. Um, what we're looking at is the town election ordinance hasn't been touched since 2001. Um, and there are some key things in there that we've seen in researching other municipalities that would, that we should most likely consider putting in there, things that come up during our election cycle, like campaign materials, where can you put them? We don't list that. Um, so we've started drafting, kind of hastily, uh, drafting a ordinance. Um, if the board wishes to move forward with trying to, uh, get one in place, which, um, honestly doesn't have too many large-scale changes. It pretty much incorporates how we operate between the charter, the current, um, ordinance we have in place, and, uh, best practices that the Board of Elections supervisors uses, um, and moving forward. So kind of details and puts it all into one document. Um, that's included in the packet. It was based off the Berwyn Heights model. So if you see some dates in there that don't jive, they do jive with the Town of Berwyn Heights's election cycle. Um, and so I guess that we're just kind of opening up for commissioner feedback to see what, what the board, does the board want to work, move forward with a, uh, emergency ordinance, uh, passed in September, so it takes effect, and we can utilize that, or just utilize the, the current ordinance, which we could make work for the selection cycle, and work on this before the next election, um, to overhaul the rest of the way.
Well, how much would of, of a push would it be, Kyle, to, to make that happen, to actually get this updated for you guys?
Um, I think I was able to get most of it drafted today, um, and I have had a couple of meetings with John, um, about best practices, like what he's seen in Mount Rainier and how to move it forward. So I think unless there are any huge issues with the way we wrote the new ordinance, we tried to streamline absentee ballots as much as possible, um, because the old ordinance goes into a lot of detail on how the absentee, like, that's the most detailed part was the absentee ballot, which you don't see in other municipalities. That's kind of why we have some cumbersome issues, I think, um, with the apps, because it's specifically saying the types of envelopes and whatnot. It wouldn't be a difficult push, I don't think. Um,
Um, we would have to adopt it as an emergency ordinance.
So it would take effect immediately.
Um.
We would have to do that by.
I would recommend the September town meeting.
Okay.
But I would also recommend the board have another extra work session just to discuss that particular ordinance, because I know you and the public are just seeing that preliminary draft today.
Right.
Yeah, I, I mean, I definitely think that after campaigning last summer, um, there were a lot of people who really wanted us to change that absentee balloting process. Um, so I would really like to be responsive to that and get, basically, people wanted absentee ballot pro- process to be easier. They wanted us to just mail them the ballots and be able to mail them back into town hall and have a little more time. I don't know with the time crunch if we can do have a little more time, but we might be able to mail them out to every registered voter if we can pass something quickly. Um, and I feel like we should be responsive to our voters. Um, and we have this next election coming up, so.
Okay, I, I'm just going to go on record now. I do not agree with mailing them out to every registered voter. If you want an absentee ballot, we can make it easier for you to request one, but I don't think we should send one out to every registered voter.
Yeah, I, I would also agree with that. I, I think that we should stick with, if they're interested and they really want to vote, then yes, they have one sent to them, but not to every person. That's just my thought on it. I think, eh, you know, anyone could, um, I, I think we'll probably just be wasting resources if we also do it that way.
Okay, I, I just, the most common complaint I got was this process is extremely difficult, and it's making me almost not want to vote. And I don't think we want to make the process of voting so difficult that residents don't, are, are gonna say, oh, I just can't, you know, so.
We can try to make the process of requesting a ballot easier. I know ours is cumbersome, but we can do that easier if you want to request an absentee ballot. Uh, the problem I have, I'll be honest with you, Sarah, is this town is less than one square mile. It will have the voting on, on election day open for, what, um, quite mo- all day and into the evening. At some point in time, you should be able to get yourself to the poll. If you cannot, uh, do that, then absentee ballot is fine, and we can make that as easy as possible. Uh, it, it's not as big a hardship as, you know, it sounds like some people think. And, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, you know, it's, it's to me, a gift to live in this country and be able to vote, and if what stops you from voting, to be right, to be honest, is it's too hard.
I find that. So it, right, so it, it is, it's up right. So we don't want to make it hard to exercise your rights. Um, we don't want to make it, you, you only are able to vote if you can jump through these hoops and, and really, it's, you just have the right to vote. Um, so I do think we want to make it easier for people to get absentee ballots.
I'm not against that. That I have no problem with. I think our, our process currently is very difficult.
Mm-hmm.
Well, not necessarily very difficult, but it, it is, we're cumbersome, and we can streamline that. But, uh, like I said, I don't think it should go out to everybody without their request.
Yeah, and Kyle, did you just mention something about you can make an online request? I couldn't see the entire.
Yeah, I think we can, uh, and looking at what some other places do and our capabilities, I think we can do beforehand what we did last election cycle was, we tried to make it as easy as possible with what we were working with, and that was we mailed out, um, absentee ballot request forms to everyone. So they would self- to fill out that form, send it in, then we get a ballot in. Um, but I think what we can do and work with John is, uh, have people be able to send by email, and we'd be able to mail them, or they'd pick up their ballot. We would still need a physical signature from the person, like all ones need, um, and they can return both the absentee ballot request signed and their ballot together. So we're not doing this back and forth of paperwork. Um, which is, which is cumbersome, and then I know John has some ideas on the, the absentee ballot, how the design of it, um, to make it a bit streamlined as well. But I know that the mail-in, as hard as it is for people to prop, to, to submit it, it's just as fun on our end to, to process them all. So.
Yeah. So will we be able to get that process into the ordinance, or at least enable that process into the ordinance, so we can make it easier for folks to vote and easier for you guys to process it?
Yeah, so I already started in the, that draft ordinance, like, cut back the absentee requirements, um, already to, pretty much like two paragraphs, um, so it gives us more leeway and actual execution of that. Um, stressing it out, and I think I did include in there online as well.
I didn't get that far, sorry.
Okay, yeah, that, that's why I wanted this.
I have, I have a quick question. I'm not sure if I'm supposed to talk here, but, um, given the current climate, the fact that people don't necessarily want or may not want to show up, not, not necessarily because it's too difficult, but because I don't, and granted, I know this is a small town, but we don't want to be exposed to other people, and granted, I, hopefully by January, you know, everything will go away, but um, being more realistic, um, I think it would be better if, if our process was more like, you know, digital or online. Um, so that's my little two cents on that.
Darrell, and you can chime in anytime you want.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, you're, you're, you're a citizen. That's what these discussions are for, so don't ever feel like you can't. Uh, I think, uh, if we can make, we made that, uh, absentee ballot much more available, well, not even more available, but available, and was used much more in the last election, uh, in our, uh, summer elections from last year. And that was uh, through two special elections. I mean, we will have an open vote and polling place here, uh, and then that is your choice. If you do not wish to come and, and do that, then you can request the absentee ballot, and we can make that as easy as possible. Or as less stressful as possible.
Um, there's a question about signature. Pretty much, um, what I've seen with other municipalities is they do still request some sort of physical signatures. Either people scan and sign and scan it back. Um, so we thought it'd be easier for, when they get the ballot, they also have the actual request, formal request form they sign and send back, um, so that we do have everything on file with the signature versus us, you sending the sign form, we send you the ballot, you guys send the ballot back.
Um, so you can send a request form in the ballot out at the same time.
You can just send an email to clerk@uppermarlboroMD.gov with your name, address. Um, we just double-check, make sure that is a registered voter, and we mail it to the address. Obviously, if the address they're requesting it to be mailed to is different than what's on the voter card, then we have some issues. Um, but that's just this, or if the person on the other end called, and we'll put a sticker, like, if you did not request this ballot, please call town hall ASAP, um, so that the person on the other end isn't confused.
So, um, Kyle, if my college student wanted one, would he need, would we need to request the ballot and mail it to our house in Upper Marlboro, and then have us mail it down to him, and then have him mail it back, or would you be able to say, okay, like, here's a picture of his driver's license. It says he's a resident of that address, and he's asking it to be mailed to somewhere else?
That's an interesting question, and I don't think, I know that, I'm trying to think how that would work. I've never seen that mailed to a different address than registered on, um, like, where he, they're registered to vote is normally where we pull the voter card for, but I can look into that and.
We can do the middleman thing? I was just curious.
Okay, I think we can look into it. We can see what happens. Um.
You should run that one by the Board of Supervisors.
Yeah, I mean, worst case is, um, yeah, the Board of Supervisors, once, once we appoint them, but I mean, worst case is we can just coordinate and we can hand you a blank mail-stamped envelope or something. You can mail it to the correct address, because what you can do is you can sign it as a authorized agent and come and pick it up and act as an agent, um, for them.
Okay.
That's, I'm gonna make a note of that, and, uh, I'll get back to you, because that's a, I read your comment, and I was thinking about that.
Thank you.
Um, I think the other comments I had, we already, I already talked to you about with the box being small, and you said we have a new box.
Yeah.
Um, that is larger, uh, so that will resolve that. Um, I guess people wanted a way to mail it in, which we may or may not be able to do because of postmark and time issues. Maybe, should we think about, like, should we, this is a question for the Board of Supervisors, but should we be tallying them that night, or should we say tally, um, the next day after the mail arrives, so that if something was postmarked today before, you know, that's a question to think about.
True. Because I was looking at some of the larger jurisdictions, um, like, I was looking at Washington DC. They do accept past postmark. As long as it's postmarked correctly, they accept it, because I guess they're still tallying votes, um, through the whole process. Um, but the smaller municipalities, I will admit that they didn't have that option. They're all like, it's gotta be here by cutoff of the polling place.
Okay.
But that's their preference. Um,
Yeah.
I'm sure, I don't think there's a state law saying that, um, and I don't see too many absentee ballots swinging a vote, um,
Yeah.
for municipal function.
I think our issue would revolve around be, having to secure ballots overnight, like, having a place to secure them, our Board of Supervisors having to come in multiple days and that kind of thing, uh, but just something to think about based on the comments I got.
Then, in Mount Rainier, what they did is, as long as your, um, absentee ballot is postmarked before election day or day of, um, the counting actually occurs that evening when the polls close, um, and then the absentees are added. Um, I think it's, generally, it's one day after. So whatever comes in, I know we had a PO box that was set up just for Board of Elections, and anything that went in that PO box that was gathered that next day, um, was counted, added to the counts. It more or less usually sometimes doesn't throw the count that far. Um, so usually you have an idea as to who the candidate has won, whoever it was. So it's usually never an issue.
That's true. The Board of Elections doesn't have to certify the election result until the Thursday after.
That's right.
So that is, we do have some leeway where, that's a good, thanks, John.
Yeah, thank you.
The, uh, PO box idea, I think, might help us as well, having a specified PO box just for the ballots.
I think we did do that. I have to double-check, but because we can't really trust the town, delivery people coming to town hall normally, they honestly put the mail in our PO box anyways.
Yeah, so if we have a specified bo- a separate. Yeah, so if we have a specified box, a separate box at the post office, that we can do that with. Uh, that would, I think, help things greatly. It won't, it won't get lost somewhere in that shuffle.
Did, did we want a separate PO box or just not use the current PO box? Cause both the clerk and the deputy clerk are the only ones with access to it.
What do you think, John? A separate box?
In Mount Rainier, it was a separate box that only Board of Elections had control over. There was no, the, the control was all handled just by the Board of Elections and that's where it was, that landed there. And that's what the way they liked it. So no one from the city or the, you know, was involved.
That would also be like, so if someone put their ballot in and it was postmarked that day, because it's at the post office, it would be there the next day.
That's correct. And then that way you know that it's coming from a certified official to the post office into the mailbox, in the box.
Something to think about.
The way, the way our current ordinance is written, it has the town clerk holding all the ballots, not the board of, but that's subject.
John looks excited.
So that, that, that can be, that, that's just the way it's worded currently, but. That doesn't mean it's not the best, um, option.
So we should have a meeting sometime in the next week or two to discuss this further.
Yes, I would just, yeah, grunge through and I'll have time to go through with the, the town attorney, make sure there's nothing illegal in there. Um, and if the commissioners see anything they want to change in the, uh, or residents, um, in that ordinance, they can let us know. I didn't make a lot of stuff up. Like I said, it's based off another municipality, pretty much our size. Um, I would see the way they do things had to, I had to take a bunch of stuff out and add some of our stuff in there. But it is a, I think, a much better full, all-around guidance on the election process. And it also sets the, uh, the rates for payments of the Board of Supervisors, which we had never done before. I guess it kind of been made up before, um, so now it kind of breaks it out by the chair. The actual, the other, if they're not the chair, the other Board of Supervisors of Elections and then just regular election judges that are appointed. Um, so that's another big change in there. We could put it in a resolution, but I figured that. Those rates shouldn't really change as much.
They wouldn't change as frequently.
Correct, yeah.
I know that's a lot of research to go through and check with what other municipalities are doing on certain things. And we have to keep in mind, they're. They may be processing four thousand voters or, you know, two thousand voters and we're processing two hundred voters. So we have to keep that in mind as well.
For now.
Right now, yeah.
Yeah, that's, John, thank you for putting all that together, um. You did all the, the crunch work for those binders.
Thank you, John.
Any other questions regarding the election ordinance? Okay, here, none. Moving on to election judges, election calendar. Okay, do you want to take that?
Yeah, I can take that. I'm happy to report to you that we have heard back from all three of the residents that we reached out to for, uh, supervisors of election. All three have agreed to serve, um, in that capacity. So we have Joe Horclay, Evelyn Stevens, and Yvonne Tucker, who will be serving as your supervisors of election. For the upcoming election on Tuesday, November second, twenty twenty-one.
That's wonderful.
Thanks, guys. I don't know if you, everyone's here, but thank you.
And then next, I want to tell you all about the, uh, schedule for the election. Um, Kyle and I sat down and we worked up the potential schedule for the election cycle. Um, so that is what is presented here. Of course, um, Election Day will take place on November second. Um, polls open at seven AM and you all need to determine what time you guys would like your polls to close. So that's something else you guys need to determine for your election ordinance as well. Um, but this basically, um, outlines when, uh, candidate packets will be ready. When your Board of Elections will be sworn in, um, all of the different items. So it's all here on the calendar.
Um, I did have a question. There are two Wednesdays on here. What is the sort of, are both of these Wednesdays things we need to be at? I, I guess the second one obviously is if, if we're running for office again, but the thirteenth is that.
So thirteenth is a night where what's going to happen there is the, um, Board of Elections is going to go on camera. They're going to certify that all people have turned in the proper documentation and they are now officially certified to appear on the ballot. Um, and then they will go ahead and draw names out of a hat to determine how the names will be presented on the ballot. So that is what that is. You all are welcome to attend that. You guys don't have to attend that event. The most important event, of course, is that Wednesday, October twenty-seventh, which will be the virtual candidate forum. So that will be a chance for you all to, of course, address, uh, the residents and the public. Um, and for them to get to know the candidates. And, um, I think that's gonna be a, a real beneficial evening for everyone involved.
That's a date just we suggested, right, John? That wasn't, I know the can, the certification pretty much needs to happen almost immediately. And Tuesday, Monday is the holiday, Tuesday's a town meeting, and so Wednesday was the next available day for that. Um, which is why it was chosen, but the, the forum, I guess, was just kind of a date that.
And the forum date. For my master gardener certificate, um, for the community garden. So that's Wednesday and Friday night. So that's why, uh, I can miss it like, I think, like one time, maybe twice, um, and still be certified. So that's why I was asking.
That date can also change once we start meeting with the Board of Elections, um, and give them a chance to, um, some flexibility as when to have a host, host. The candidate forum. So, um, we'll just put tentative on that if you'd like.
Okay, thanks.
I think Patty had a question.
Yeah, hi, um, are the, the. The new election supervisors, I guess, are they aware of the change at seven AM? Which means they'd have to be there from six AM till nine PM. That's an awful long time. For folks with no breaks.
So, um, there, we're actually looking for election judges, um, and we have at least two people. Who have volunteered to be election judges to ensure that there's breaks. Um, and opening the polls earlier was, we discussed that with the Board of Elections of Supervisors at the public hearing for the Charter Amendment. Um, and they were fine with it as long as, you know, they had election judges and they could, you know, trade out. Uh, they reached, and we reached that almost. Um, but that was the big ask from.
So, so my, my, my concern was is Yvonne. Was already having issues. Is she going to be able to go from six AM till at least nine PM?
She was at the, uh, like I said, we had probably an hour discussion with both her and Joe Horclay at the in-person public hearing. Um, and that's what they, I don't think the Board of Supervisors have ever done this before, but they do have the power in the charter to appoint. Just regular election judges so they can take breaks and whatnot. And yeah, so then they, they even said like, it really only takes two people to run the election, especially if we have heavy absentee. The third person kind of sits there and tells people to put ballots in the box. And they seemed all right with it as long, and that was something I think the board was, um. Was asking them as well, was, is this feasible? How many people do you need? Um, because the Charter Amendment did allow us to increase the, uh, the Board of Supervisor election to five if needed. Um, which is one of the things, just to make sure they have enough help, but they can also appoint their own judges.
Okay, all right, yeah, that, I just. I know, I, when I did it from eleven till nine, that was really tough when you couldn't. Really, I mean, yeah, you could get bathroom breaks, but lunches and anything else, these people were trickling in at all times.
I said Patty is saying she wants to be an.
No, 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 not at all, not at all. Um, no, I'm just, I know how difficult it was. Um, because you had, you were stuck in that building from six AM till nine PM.
Yeah, we're getting them some help though, so they don't have to.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, we, we are actively, we will be actively seeking out election people to do, be election judges. And, uh, hopefully we will have enough that they can be relieved periodically for a few hours, you know, they could cat nap, whatever. Uh, however they want to do it. I don't think, you know, if we do, uh, if we have a heavy absentee ballot. Uh, we won't see that much coming through the building, so it won't be as. Difficult for them, like they, they told us two could do it if, you know, need be. If we don't have to put it all on two people, let's not do it. So if you know anybody who is willing to be an election judge. Uh, feel free to let them, you know, tell them to contact us.
And that'll go, kind of go in shifts, so no one, even the Board of Supervisors of Elections is there for that whole day.
So if I'm working from home, I can take your guys' lunch break, but that's all I'm offering.
Um, I have a question. And I am separated from my regular binder because Craig's got the room. Um, I thought that the ordinance said the second Tuesday in November. Does it? Because this is the first Tuesday in November. And maybe I'm confused because the new ordinance said that and maybe that wasn't like the, the one you did today.
I think the second came from when the board, it's the new Board of Commissioners is appointed on the second Monday of December.
So it's the first Tuesday and I just wanted to make sure. Yeah.
We definitely don't want to get that wrong. For supervisors.
I'm trying to pull it up on this other.
Any questions on the, uh, elections, election schedule at this point? Okay.
Yeah, first Tuesday in November every odd numbered years. It says the second Tuesday like three times though, for other things. It scared me.
Okay.
The next item we present to you is the, um. Election postcards that we're gonna send out to the residents and the plan is to hopefully get these printed tomorrow and get these out to everybody. So if we could have everyone look those over and verify information, that would be great. Um, we would, of course, need to know what date, or what time you guys would like the polls to open and close. So we can put that on the card. Of course, we're notifying residents that the deadline for county filing of, um, or. You know, election registration is Friday, October eighth, and with the town, of course, it'll be Friday, October twenty-second. Uh, this provides all the information. We are going to be adding information to the website. Um, and then, of course, on the other side of the postcard, it adds, asks for candidates. So it gives the criteria to run for office, um, and gives the filing deadline and when things are due. And of course, for more information, here to contact.
These look awesome. Sort of, all right, it's sort of a comment is that people also want it to be easier to be a commissioner. So, um, they're on this card, but I think it would be good for us to be let, like, maybe there's frequently asked questions. Or something like, do the town meetings have to be held on Tuesday night? Like, no, the new board will determine the time of the. So that people feel like, if they're like, oh, I can never do a Tuesday night, so I can't run for commissioner, but that's not true. They could run and serve in the meeting night, which is changed. So that kind of thing, um.
And it's something I do, and also put it on the website, is a frequently asked questions about elections. Something that we always felt was helpful, of course, in the other municipality that I work for. Um, and so it was good to allow people to ask questions and get that information. As well as we'll, we'll get some video, uh, from our Board of Elections. We can kind of do some fun things, uh, social media wise. Uh, so that we really can pound at home, um, about the elections and, and get information out to everybody. So they, they're clear about what's gonna happen on November second.
We also possibly, if, uh, someone wants to like learn about being a commissioner, um, would the commissioner be opposed to having your contact or emails put on there? They can reach out.
I'm happy to talk to anyone.
Likewise, that's totally fine with me, Kyle.
Okay, or at least we'll just put a link to the, uh, to the page with all your contact info too. Just in case someone wants to reach out and talk to an elected official.
That sounds good.
I think that's great.
And of course, the next item, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I feel like we can close the polls at eight, if, because you need us to decide that. Does everyone feel like eight or do we feel like we need to leave them open till nine?
Traditionally, it's been eight.
I think eight should be, seven until eight is seven AM.
Yeah, I think people can get.
Yeah, I think everybody could make it in, but it, I mean, it's sufficient. I think nine is.
Pushing, yeah.
You just have to ask the Board of Elections supervisors, make sure they're good with extent, like being able to count the ballots. If we were to extend it.
I think eight, eight is, uh, more than sufficient if you're starting at seven.
Yeah.
The next item in the packet, of course, is the election yard signs. These are going to be advertisements that will be placed around the town. Um, of course, it's got the, all the information that is also on the postcard. Um, and also, once again, asking for candidates to, uh, to go ahead and, and get signed up so we can get candidates. So that is the next item there. If there's any questions.
Um, this is Patty. Um, I've seen closed the business in there, but can we actually put a time? Because everybody's closed the business is different.
Sure, happy to do that.
And that way they know when the deadline is and they won't be running in at the last minute.
I will fix that tomorrow. All right, and then the next item. One thing that we always thought was nice is you get an I voted button, uh, when you go and vote at the polls. And so one thing we thought would be nice is, uh, we did buttons, actual, uh, pin buttons that we'll give to every voter that comes in. And so this is the pin design that we thought would work. Um, it says your vote counts in the town of Upper Marlboro and of course it has the medallion and the seal.
Versus stickers, generic I voted stickers.
Yes.
Yeah, those are nice. That's very nice.
Those will be a one-inch button that people can wear and you can keep, which is kind of nice. That's it.
I like the push effort and the graphics are great, John. So all of the work that was put into this is pretty awesome.
Thank you.
I think it will definitely be getting everybody's attention.
I had help with Kyle, so thank you, Kyle.
I didn't do too much. He did all the design. Don't. Don't try to be modest, John.
Well, I appreciate all the effort that, it, that looks completely different than what we had in the past, so.
Yeah, it looks really good.
Okay, uh, any other questions regarding, uh, election calendar and, or any of that? Hearing none, we'll go on to number four, which is Town Administrator Chief Appointment, which is a board discussion. And Kyle, if you would.
Absolutely. Uh, so as the board's aware, um, a couple of months ago, the first Charter Amendment was passed and officially made the title and positions. Town Administrator Chief of Police and, uh, Town Attorney Best has gently reminded me that we need to pass resolutions. Um, the board just need to pass resolutions officially, appointing those people to those positions. Um, I don't think they have to go in too much in depth and I wouldn't honestly recommend it. Um, as we look forward, for Chief of Police, for instance, I think, um, one thing on our plate is a police ordinance. Pretty much that the duties in the. As we look forward for Chief of Police, for instance, I think one thing on our plate is a police ordinance, pretty much up to duties and the powers and mutual aid and whatnot, just a comprehensive ordinance that officially gives the chief his due, his powers. And for the town administrator, as we look at structure of government here with the new board, things could change as well. Just kind of keep the some general a general resolution, appointing those person people to those positions. And we can have those ready for the September town meeting, because there's really not a whole lot on our agenda for the September town meeting, but open it up and
And this permanently puts them in the charter.
No, they're already permanent. It's just appointing the 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 actual people to the positions. That they're already in the charter. The positions are in the charter. We just need
Okay.
The positions, like we did a resolution for John as town clerk. So
So there'll be a resolution appointing Kyle.
And a resolution finding
Correct, yeah, with the, I swear, uphold the laws of the town. Okay.
Oh, so and you guys will have to take an oath, which you, well, you took one probably because you were
Yeah, I took, yeah, back in the day, and I think Chief probably took one in when he was
Yeah.
But he, there was no formal charter amendment at that point, so he
Neither one were formal.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Any other questions or comments regarding that? And next up, on the floor, we'll go to Commissioner Franklin regarding her vision outreach plan.
Or so, yeah, just kind of how I've structured the vision from just conversations with residents, conversations with the you know, the meetings with the commissioners, conversations with town staff and et cetera. So I tried to break it down into some interesting topics for our outreach effort. So the town would be a place to connect, a place that's safe, and a place that thrives. People want it to be safe. They want it to be, they want economic development, and they want to be able to get from place to place easily and be able to interact with their neighbors. So I've broken that down into a whole series of bullets that, you know, we can go through and look at, but the for the outreach plan, what I'd like to do is have, you know, just three boards, place to connect, place that's safe, place that thrives, and have stickies out, and people can write down their ideas on them and stick them in there, and then we can add it to these bullet points. I want people to have as much flexibility to to say what they think for the town that this point in the process. You know, we may still get a whole bunch of like, well, the the speeds need to be reduced on the roads. That's really important to people. So we could put a sticky up there. We could add that those kinds of things we really know are important to people and have people, you know, say yes, amen, with their little stickies. But I think right now, letting people really feel like they have a chance to add stuff to this plan, because right now, it's it's, we're talking about road connections, reducing speed on roads, sidewalk connections, like a complete sidewalk network, connecting areas through trails. We talked about doing that with Marlboro Town. We've talked about tourism, boat tourism, so wayfinding, bus stop improvements, street improvements, events, playgrounds, parks. I think all stuff people are, would be excited about. So the plan is to start going out with these boards, and we need to set some dates in September and October that we can get to Marlboro Town, Spring Branch, Rectory, and like my downtown, I think. Is that too many? I don't know. We're we're just kind of seeing
Technically, we will be downtown on Saturday.
True. Yeah. Okay. That makes sense.
And so you're looking
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, man.
Three different neighborhoods or area, three other areas other than the downtown area.
Yeah. Maybe we
We traditionally, oh, sorry, Sarah. Do we traditionally get that many people that actually live in the town that come out to these events? And the reason why I say that is because I'm very familiar with the, like, you know, these car shows and things like that. Typically, there are folks that are coming in from other areas to attend an event like this. So I'm just kind of, just on the feedback, if you, if in the past that there's been a lot of participation from the community per se. I know for other events like the spring, you know, the the festival coming up, I know the town is going to show up for that. But I'm just saying for something like this, more out of towners may show up. But I mean, I'm not, I I think it's a great idea. But I'm just wondering if we'll be able to get that feedback that we were before.
The car show probably brings out more talent than anything.
Plus, you want to hear from stakeholder businesses, visitors, kind of wanted, so this could be a chance to hear that. And then you have the three at Marlboro Town, Spring Branch Drive, and I guess like Rectory, Wilson Church Street type area. And do the, the events, I think that'd capture a good amount of town residents and then try to think of Elm Street.
And we can separate out the, but do like, so if we put it, if I cook, you know, get all the input together from us being downtown, and then if it completely contradicts with the input from the three communities, then we can address that if it comes up, kind of keep all the input separate so that we have that information.
Do you think it would be, we have memories and marshals on Main Street in September, that'll be downtown. If you put one at that or in that same area. You could get this, that downtown Saturday.
That's true.
Traffic. Sunday, I'm sorry, it's always been on Saturday.
Oh, maybe I have it wrong. I don't know.
No, it, no, I I said that, I said, sorry, it's always been on Saturday. That's why I said that.
Okay.
But that's this year, this Sunday, and you you would get maybe even a different crowd of people.
Yeah. Yeah, I just really collab or pulled all these bullets together so you guys could see kind of what's been coming out of all the conversations I've been having. So we can make that available on the website, too, and maybe even have it like a printout or two of it that people can take a look at at the events.
We also need to look at what else we're going to be doing down the line as far as events. Where you could probably maybe put some of it.
Yeah, there's going to be the movie nights. I don't think you can do it at trunk or treat unless we had glow in the dark signs.
And it might work better if people may just to do that.
There was only black phone board, so we are going to be having some bright colors involved.
Okay, well, thank you for that presentation. Any, any questions for Commissioner Franklin? On this? And I put a lot of work into this, and hopefully, we will gain a lot more insight as we go forward with it.
Absolutely. This looks good.
Okay, moving along, the red light, speed camera, RFP submission. Hey, which one of you two want to talk about it first, Jafe or Kyle?
Oh, the Florida Kyle. All right, so as the board's aware, we released an RFP for red light speed camera, and we got five firms back in time. Well, four came in on time. One did X for an extension of a couple of days, so they came in. And they're listed there, Nova Group, Illuminant, Sensi Gatto, Conduit, and Red Speed USA. And then, so I broke it out as to kind of isolate the board a bit to make fair judgments on moving forward. Chief and I sat down and we did standard evaluations of the each RFP that was submitted. We took a standard sheet from our RFP that we put together with each of the questions and all the criteria, and we went through one by one, making sure each of them met the criteria, what we were asking for, and some of the relevant topics in there. How many Maryland clients did they have? What kind of relations? Do they work well with state highway? What's their experience working with state highway in the county, DPWNT? And with that, we were able to rank them from one, two, three, four, and five. We have some very strong, one and two are both very strong candidates. Firm five had, as you can see, no Maryland clients. So that's a a red flag. And the second last firm had some other issues and not as many clients. So if the board would like, I mean, I have the RFPs available if the commissioners want to go through them, but I just wanted to put this unbiased before you to see how you wanted to move forward. We can if you say you want to meet with the top two firms, which I'd recommend at least a presentation with them, just to get to know them and see what their strategies are moving forward. We can set that up with those top two or top three, however, however you wish. So I just wanted to get some feedback for the board, how you wanted to proceed.
What is the timeline for the camp and and red light camera?
So the law does not go into effect until mid-October to authorize a couple of speed cameras, and then we're also looking at annexation. It's not as far as long as we'd like either. So really, we're looking to mid-October would be the earliest we could get a speed camera on, say, seven twenty-five at Marble Drive or whatnot, or some red light cameras on Main at Water, Government Buoy Drive at Main. But obviously, with that, it'll probably take at least a month after we select a firm for them to put everything into state highway and move those permits along. Which firm one is a, they have state highway, Maryland State Highway is a client. Which is why
Very helpful.
Yes, which is why we ranked them as such. They had them, they've had them as a client since 2009.
Okay, I know we've mentioned an extra work session, which we're already jamming
Yeah.
So I do, do you think we need to do another one sooner rather than later? That'd be a good time to have the, at least the top two.
Yeah, what's the anti lobbying thing that the third firm is no on?
So that in our RFP, we put in there that they had to make a promise in writing in their, somewhere in their proposal, that they would not lobby elected officials for their vote from once at one point that the RFP was released, to when the firm was selected to help isolate the board, because it's, it is a pretty competitive market, and they all hire lobbying firms. And so those bottom two had no mention of the anti lobbying that was required. I think firm
No one called me.
Yeah, the firm three actually should be a yes. They did have it in there. That's on me. That's why it's not in red. But like for firm one and two is front and center in their cover letter. We acknowledge, we respect the wishes of the town, and we're not going to move forward. So but yet the the bottom two did not have any mention of it at all. Did I miss anything, Chief?
No, you didn't. I was just going to say that you just said it that the third firm, we weren't 100% clear. They had a they touched on it, but it wasn't as strong as we would have liked it. So so it's a yes and no. The other thing about the timeline, Kyle is right, we have to set the agreement. We also have to give the firm an opportunity to come out and do a little bit of surveying. But there's also, I believe, it's a 30 or 45 day window that we have to give motorists, even after the camera is set, it's either 30 or 45 days. I can't remember off the top of my head, where we can only issue quote unquote warnings, and then after that time period is when the cameras will actually be active with full citations. So I would say maybe closer to December might be a better timeline. Because like I said, we have to go through the logistics. Seven twenty-five might be a little faster because we already have data for that particular road. The other areas may, like I said, may be a little bit more time consuming, because we do have to allow for the advertisement. It has to be on newspaper, I believe, and two publications stating that we have installed the camera. So I would just say maybe December is is more of an accurate timeframe. That's it.
So we'll have everything coming on board in October, but we won't start re being able to ticket people until December.
Right, I would say closer to December, because like I said, if it's, if it's 45 days, you know, we're talking about October, then November into December is the 45 days. So I would lean more to December. Like I said.
And so you guys read the RFPs for, and really felt that like firm one and two went like way beyond firm three, four, and five.
I would say one, two, and three. But firm three had the yes and no for the anti lobbying, and we haven't had, I mean, nobody's contacted me, so. So they, like Kyle said, that could actually be a yes. So it's really three yeses with a 12, 11, and 11. The last two are completely out, in my opinion. So we really have
So do we have any feedback from other, like, locations that are using outside, of course, the Maryland State Highway for Nova Global, but two and three in terms of other locations that are using them in terms of their service and how they're working with them? Do you have any information on that?
Kyle, how many municipalities do we know that use any of or
Um, so to the right, so where it says Maryland client, and the list, the firm number doesn't match up with that first list of names I gave, that that was just random. But the Maryland clients are either counties or municipalities, and I can break it out by municipalities as well, but I know number three, number one and two had the most, I guess, in our area on the side of the bay. Would that be, and number three was more on the other side of the bay, correct? Chief?
Yes, I think, I think, well, like I said, there's, I can't remember off the top of my head, but there's two that have local and one that has local and more out of this area. So all three of them have local, but the top two have more local municipal agencies than the third.
And if the board, I mean, if if the board actually wants to read the RFP, it's not secret. I just wanted to have you guys go and blind on bits, and you can actually see clients of each and break it out there physically. I can actually email them out tonight. If you say I want to see firm one, two, and three, I can email those out tonight. I'd be leaving for first thing tomorrow morning.
I really like this, by the way, Kyle, like, for just reviewing stuff, because it lets us really objectively look at it. And then it lets us say like, okay, I want to see the top. I mean, I think it would be good to see the top three if if we can see them. But then we're not like, kind of trying to pick through them and figure out if they have everything we need, so. I appreciate, I appreciate you and Chief, your work on this. Thank you.
Yes.
So I want to answer the question. It looks like it says do these record speed as well or just red light? So the red light cameras that we're looking at will just do the red lights and the cameras will just do this, I'm sorry, the red light cameras will just do the red lights and the speed cameras will just do the speeding. There are some cameras that do both, but in the locations that we're looking to put the red light cameras, it it wouldn't, it wouldn't help, because it's more or less of a a right turn violation more so than anything. The speed cameras will be on the areas where there's a high rate of speed going on. So hopefully, that answers your question.
And what I told all the firms when they asked for the number of cameras, I said two speed cameras and up to three to four intersections that could be red light enforced. So everyone's aware of what the rollout, that won't be immediate. We'll probably phase in a speed camera, some red lights, and go from there, but ultimately build up probably by June or July into that number, but probably off of that, looking at two speed and a couple of intersections for safety issues, where we know there's safety issues.
Patty, you have a question?
Yes, um, so do, where the placement of these red light cameras and speed cameras, are they including the places that we've been, we are currently going to annex?
Yes, some are in, I'd say half are in town and half are in annexed areas.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Because one, obviously, speed camera is the Catholic school on 202, which is already a speed camera zone. And the other one is seven twenty-five, where we have, we know we have the issue with the bus stops and whatnot and speed.
Yeah, well, I think we should at least talk to Yeah, well, I think we should at least, uh, talk to the top two or three and, uh, see if they can, are available to give a, a. Short presentation.
Absolutely, I can do that. Um, and I can send out the top three RFPs by email or happen, we'll print if you just want to peruse them. Um, but we'll move forward with work setting something up and that can happen in September, um, after the September town meeting, I think. We'll do a spare one, um, but we'll, we can figure out a date for that. But we'll try and keep them to twenty minutes to a half hour. We're gonna be getting in and out in an hour.
And we can, if we all look at the three, we all send back and say like, oh, I want to see these two and it happens to be the same two for all three of us. We can. Just do those, right? It can happen.
Yeah, I think once you.
But it can happen.
Once you see the client lists, it'll be pretty clear. And then, uh, but we won't, even if you choose just to interview two, we won't throw away the third until actual final. Would be my recommendation for that.
Okay. Any questions for chief or Kyle on this? Long awaited.
No, this is Patty.
Yes.
Can I get one of those speed cameras on Church Street?
No.
You can have a, you can have a, a speed sign.
Oh, I know we need them everywhere, but I think if we strategically place them and we start giving out speeding tickets, people will start taking that. The twenty-five mile an hour speed a little more, uh, seriously than they do currently. I, all you have to do is watch out the windows here at Town Hall and old Marlboro, or old Crane Highway there. Is, is a speed zone.
Especially the annexed area, seven twenty-five between two oh two and three oh one is a. We've had cars into buildings multiple times and extrications and.
Yes.
So it's, uh, I think it's gonna be strategic in the timing of all that's, um.
I know that everybody will get used to the cameras being there and they won't be as, uh, effective, you know, on a monetary basis. Which is not why we want them there, but they will be on a lower the speed basis, which is really why we want them there. And if they make that. I'm good with that. I mean, I, it's lowering the speed in the stomach. All you have to do is stand there at any given intersection. Or at the street and, and they're going crazy. They have no regard for the.
And we can use, yeah, we can use the funds too to make structural improvement to the roads to slow them down too. Um, which.
Thing that we will discuss at a later time.
Right.
Okay.
Cause the, the, the challenge that we have is most of the roads are state highway. And we should make recommendations to them to fix the roads and not volunteer because then we'll be spending all of our money fixing roads that we don't control. So.
Right. But some of our roads, like Janice's Street. You know, I know it's nice to think that the money on the street, but like, we can't have a red light on rectory or school. But we can make structural improvements with the red light money to those areas. So we're slowing people down.
Later.
Or maybe we can't, maybe we can't.
But let's get, let's get everything set first. We always get a little further down the road than we, we need to be right now. Right now, we need to get these things in and pick, pick a, uh. A company to do that. So that's on the agenda at this point. Any other questions regarding the RFP for red light and street cameras? Okay, I am looking in my packet at an application for a roll-off.
Yes, this is a, uh, roll-off permit application for the new family that moved on to the house of the corner of Elm Street at seven twenty-five. Uh, they have a storage unit, um, that, uh, code officer Stewart, um. Just reminded them that they need a permit if the, um, unit's gonna stay over fifteen days, which is has. Um, so as you can see and hear, they're requesting that it, uh, they get a permit through, um, we'll probably issue it through the end of November. Even though they're asking for mid-November, but we just need, uh, per the ordinance, we just need a board approval, um, to issue out the permit.
Okay, and this is a store.
So let me, let me clarify something. It, it's not a roll-off dumpster. It's actually a storage. Uh, little container like one of the cube things. So. Yeah, it's like a pod or a cube. Um, so it's not what you see here on the screen. And I guess my recommendation would be maybe for the pods and things of that nature. We don't necessarily need to go through this process for those because those are generally. Thirty days, forty-five days, you know, sixty days, but the dumpsters are more commercial. Related, and I think we should have board approval for those, but the pods and things of that nature, somebody's. You know, storing stuff till they get their house renovated or they're moving stuff in. Cause we'll have people moving in and out and what will happen is if somebody's house sits on the market for, you know, thirty, sixty days, then they have to get permission. To bring the pod in, which doesn't really make sense. If they're moving, we should just let them, you know, get the pod without it being a board. Vote or discussion.
Well, they just need a permit if it's gonna be over fifty days, which is why.
I'm talking about the roll, I'm talking about the pods are, are a little, little less noticeable than the dumpsters. I know the dumpsters is what we. You know, the mayor and I kind of talked about this briefly.
And, uh, just to, just in the last twenty-four, forty-eight hours, I had a discussion with a. Uh, property owner who said that one of their businesses would be putting a pod on the property. To store some stuff while they do renovations. Now, we all know how long renovations can take. Uh, and that, and they would be, they would be storing it in a pod.
Can we review this ordinance in like October or November when we have a little less on? To, so that we can split out pods and dumpsters and give a longer time? Is that a good solution here?
One thing I had on, uh, was review it. Um, and one thing other municipalities do is they have one elected official, like kind of overseeing this type of thing. And so it doesn't necessarily, approval doesn't have to go through the whole board. It just goes to that one elected official. Um, who signs off on it, which streamlines it. It's just the way that's organs was written five years ago when we didn't have anything, but I do agree it needs to be revisited. Some, most municipalities do require permit before they're placed though, which we didn't like that because that would. Cause a lot of paperwork, um, and to it just, and they also charge a fee, but I agree it has to get revisited.
I think it just needs, uh, be tweaked as to what is what as far as a pod, as a roll-off. And the purposes for each of it of them. Uh, but in this case, I would. And, you know, approve the application. Do either of you have a, uh. Different decision?
No, I think we should approve it.
Janice?
Yes, approve it. I agree.
Okay, I am, I'm moving on to general commissioner and administrative staff items.
I have items. The first is a request of the board. Uh, I can help me make sure I explain it properly. So the community garden up at, um, PSJBS. Is go, we're working and go, getting it in and putting in a fall crop. We just planted some starters over the weekend. Uh, and we're out soliciting donations, uh, cardboard, soil, et cetera. But before we can put down the cardboard and put down the soil, we need the site to be mowed. Uh, and the church's landscapers will not mow the site. Um, but Darnell has looked at the site and said that he can mow it. However, it's not a town property. So we're asking. What we're asking is can, because it's just the community garden space, not the church's, um, lawn. Can our public works crew go and mow the area for us before we lay down and get started on the community garden? Um, ultimately, we need like a. Agreement between the church and the town to, for public works to kind of maintain the community garden as needed. Um, but for this one, uh, mowing, the request is, can the board. Uh, authorize, uh, Darnell and his crew to go over there, uh, right before we need it mowed and do so. Did I get that right, Kyle?
Oh, yeah, you nailed it. I'm just, uh, looking for general board approval to send Darnell.
I have no problem with that, back, in, especially in the fact that they're partnering with us on the community garden. It would just. That's a natural thing as far as I'm concerned to, for us to help them as much as possible.
Yes. Okay. Thanks, guys.
Okay, what's number?
So number two is not an easy issue. Well.
You hit us with the easy one first, folks.
So, um, we have a problem because, um, I have asked you, mayor. Multiple times to comply with the county's, um, regulations regarding masking. Um, and you are not willing to do so. But we have employees that are required to come into the building. And they're not being protected because you're not putting on an appropriate mask. So. We need to come up with a solution. Um, either, you know, you start putting on an appropriately, appropriate mask and wearing it over your mouth and nose. Or we need to shut downtown hall, get the employees so that they can all, all, including Lucy, everyone working from home. Um, and then also public works, uh, would not be able to service the building while you're in it. And then we would also somehow need to separate public safety so that they can be protected as well. So that's all I have. I, I don't have a good solution, but I do know that it is our. Legal requirement to protect our employees and comply with the county's mandates.
Guess we're shutting downtown home. Sarah, desk is sufficient. I, I bought it for a reason. Okay.
Linda.
Like it to you. And that is in how you feel and how you are protected is up to you, just like it's up to me.
So, um, actually the science says that the mask I wear protects everyone else. More than it protects me. That's why everyone is asked to wear a mask. Your mask is basically a bridal veil that got cut up and turned into a mask. That, if you can see through a mask, if you look, if you look at the CDC, if you look at National Institute of Health, if you can see through the mask, if it's only one layer, it's not multiple layers. Uh, it's just not doing the job of protecting other people. So you feel the mask is protecting you and it is to an extent. But the mask largely, the science says, protects other people. And that's why everyone is required to wear them per Prince George's County regulations.
So could, could the solution be to, to mask up? So I understand, like, if there's an issue, I don't know whether, you know, what the issue specifically, I'm not gonna speak to that, but. Possibly maybe, um, masking when you're leaving your office as opposed to just. Um, when you're in the open with additional staff or, you know, having to talk to them about anything. I know where I currently work, that's exactly what you have to do. You have to mask up if you're actually. Out talking to the staff or guests or whomever it is, cops, clients. But when you're in your office, there's no need to wear your mask or if you want to wear your mask. But at least you're, you're not, you're social distance from others so that they are not affected. So just in, in your area, I think. Especially if, if staff, and, and even if they can't say so, they're uncomfortable. I think that's where we have to speak up and say. They are uncomfortable. So just a, some, some, you know, making some, some adjustments. Not to say that you have to wear in your mask in your office. I'm sorry.
Sarah, I promise I will stay in my office.
So you're not gonna come out and meet with the employees in person? You'll meet with them over the phone?
That's what the phone's for. If they, that will be the employee's choice if they choose to darken my.
Okay. So I just, I want to make sure that you, you are not going to be requiring because. Because of our, the way things are set up. I need to know that you're not gonna call an employee and say, I need you to come into my office. And the reason is because with a, on mayor form of government, the employee is going to have to come into your office whether they're comfortable or not. Because they feel, you know, that could, because you can terminate them without any discussion. So that's the din, power dynamic that's making this difficult. And yes, in addition to my own discomfort with it, there have been, um, complaints. So.
I will, I have two sets of doors to my office, Sarah. I will keep them.
Okay. That sounds like it will work.
I too have some issues and I cannot breathe through your three-layered mask. And that concerns. It's that simple. I cannot breathe through that. And I will not, you know, put my health at risk. Either. So at this point in time, I will close both doors and only enter through the side door. If that makes you safer.
I think that makes our employees, because you, Janice, and I don't have to come into town hall. But our employees, when town hall is open, we're requiring them to come in. So we need to give them a safe working environment.
And currently the town hall is closed.
But we're requiring our employees to be there.
Okay, anything else?
That's all I have.
Anyone else have anything?
I had one administrative, uh.
Sorry.
The, uh, property appraisal for the, uh, pocket park, um. We've gotten to, I've reached out to a third firm, I haven't heard it back. We've gotten two proposals. One was for four thousand dollars. And one that I, um, that John sent out was for, uh, twenty-four hundred, which is obviously cheaper. And that's the one who came recommended from our, uh, land use attorney that, uh, we contracted through town attorney best. Um, it's over the two thousand dollar approval. Um, so I just want to see if the board was okay with moving forward with getting an appraisal. So that we can see what the property is actually worth, um. For the pocket park to see if the, the figure of twenty-five thousand dollars that they countered with is good or if. The, the appraisal comes back lower than that, then we have grounds, but if it comes back higher than twenty-five, maybe we should just take the twenty-five. So I just wanted to see if commissioners, any objections to move forward with this firm.
I think we do need to have the property appraised. So if, if that's our best deal, we should go forward.
Yes, no objections here.
I think we should always have property or purchase.
So this is Patty. Um, I just got sticker shock for twenty-five thousand for a slither of land.
So did we?
Yeah, so we, uh, we initially offered them eighteen thousand, Patty. Um, I can't remember what the S stat value was. Um, but we have twenty thousand dollars from the state bond bill, um, that was initially for the, um, old, old stone building. We had a hundred and seventy-five thousand, but obviously the, the county didn't give that to we to go back to the state and, um, with that, the twenty thousand for purchase of the pocket park. And the rest is for resurfacing the Church Street parking lot. Um, so of that twenty-five, the town would be coming out five thousand. Um, but in talking to Mr. Morgan, um, as part of the urban revitalization downtown, um, regrowth, we could probably recoup that five thousand from the. Rescue plan funds.
Yeah, twenty-five thousand for a slither of land. I would have thought ten.
I mean.
And it, it's commercially zoned. And when you walk up.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's not being used for anything, is it?
Now it's a grassy lot.
So just keep finding them until you make enough money to buy it.
Well, they cut the grass, Patty.
You can't find them for anything.
Our town attorney did mention eminent domain, um, and it's. Which, yeah, which I'm, I'm honestly not a big fan of, but if, um, but we'd need an appraisal to move forward. Regardless.
I mean, I guess. If we can't come to any kind of agreement, we could consider it, but it's gonna cost us to do eminent domain potentially.
Yeah, there'd be legal fees.
Yes.
Just, just throw it away then, it's such a small piece of land, it's just not worth twenty-five thousand dollars to put up a bench. I'm sorry.
Could say that. That's why we should get it.
Cause I think if, if we can get it worked just right, um, it'll be a huge value because we can, we can put water hookups and electrical hookups for events downtown. Cause right now we don't own any land on Main Street to base our operations off of, like food trucks or. Just even, I mean, we have to get a permit for, to do anything on Main Street memories and morsels, we need to get permission to do and stuff like that, so it's. It'd be good just to have some land downtown, but, but I agree, it, it's very small and twenty-five is. It was a lot, we were surprised they came back at that, um, because I think they kind of forgot they owned it.
I thought there was already electricity on Main Street that was usable.
It's draw, some of it's usable, um, legal drops is the other question, who's, who's paying for the electricity?
Because I know when they were doing, um, when they were doing um, Marlboro Day. They were using the electricity and I don't think they had to ask for it because it's readily open and available.
Yeah, they would have to go through park and planning to rent meters is what he explained to me and then he went out and tested and a bunch of the drops that were installed aren't working anymore, there's only a couple. Okay. Near the library, because just because they haven't been used, I guess, um. But this would like water hookup and stuff like, so that's just one thought for the Pocket Park, but I think the boards on. The, the commission's on board with you, that the town shouldn't be paying. An extraordinary sum of money for a, a small piece of land, um, but. We have twenty thousand from the state for the purchase, um, so anything beyond that, of course, would be coming out of the town budget.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's why we need the appraisal, we want to make sure that landowners aren't just trying to get as much as they can out of us.
Are we only getting one appraisal?
At its time, uh, one from a commercial, one commercial appraisal, but I have another firm, they came back at four thousand, which is a bit more expensive. Um, but the board could get multiple appraisals of. But then there's the thing of, it's, it is a really small piece of land.
I was just curious if, if you got the appraisal and say it was appraised, I don't know, at ten thousand dollars. The homeowner could possibly, or the landowner could possibly come back and say, hey, you only got one, you know, one appraisal and so I don't know. I don't know if we want to do that because there's a lot of money, but I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking proactively.
Yeah, they can get their own appraisal.
Exactly, that's what I was thinking, if they didn't believe that the ten thousand that we offered them, they can get their own appraisal.
Generally, when you do an appraisal, you have to have two other properties that are comparable. Um, to that same lot in size, so one company doing it would actually. Generally give you three different appraisal, it'll give you the property that you're trying to buy and two others that are considered comps. To compare it to, now the challenge may be, we don't have anything to compare it to because there's no other property on that street that's that small. So, um, I think it'd be better if we just did the one company, a reliable company who would give us accurate numbers for the property. And try to find two other properties that are similar, which would probably be very difficult because I don't know where other. Commercial, small pieces like that are, so just for clarification.
Yeah.
And it's technically not a for sale, we approached them, um, so we're not going for a realtor, it'd be, if they ended up um, choosing. Pretty much where we made an offer, they made a counter offer and then we either have to figure out how to move forward and get them to accept an offer, um. But we are also looking at some other things down the road, like. The increased commercial property tax, they may not like to see being paid on it, or, I mean, when the, if the board considers like a vacant property tax or something. Um, but we're just trying to, yeah, it's useless now, can't be, I don't think we'd really want to see it built on either, um, just because of how small it is, but.
I think zoning would, because there's uh, if you have to build so many feet away from the, the sidewalk. Uh, and that, uh, there's very little you could actually build on that piece of property. But. Where, I think we're getting ahead of everything, let's get at least one appro, I think we should get at least one. Uh, and see what it is and see how far apart we are based on that.
I agree.
I'll go ahead and reach out to them, engage with them uh, this week.
Okay, that sounds good.
And that's all I had.
Okay, I, I do have one last thing, uh. I, Sarah has brought up uh, racial uh, issues in equity. And issues within the town on several occasions. I have uh, contacted the NAACP. Uh, Jody Wildly has agreed to come and uh, talk with us. And see how we want to go forward to address this issue as we move forward with annexation. This is an elephant in the room and I don't like it to be in the room. And this is one way we can at least get a conversation started. I don't think that we can uh, start it without some help and. Jody uh, has graciously uh, said she would be very happy to help us do that. So we will um, schedule her at our next work session.
That's great.
So we can have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
I just spoke to her yesterday, by the way.
Okay.
So, yeah, I, I had, I had emailed her, but I spoke with her yesterday, so I was very happy, she was willing to do that. And that's all I have. Unless there's anything else, uh, any public comment. That needs to be done. Uh, stay safe. And just a reminder, our next regular town meeting is Tuesday, September fourteenth at seven o'clock. But watch your constant contact, we're trying to stay in contact with you, if you haven't signed up, do so, it keeps you in the know. Thank you, John, for setting that up. And good evening, everyone.
Thanks, guys.
What is the constant contact?
Go on the webpage, go on.
It's on the webpage.
If you were the, if you are already on the old list, sir, Patty, um, we automatically brought everything over to the constant contact.
Okay, I was gonna say, because I started getting, I was getting notifications and stuff and I was like, wait, wait, something new.
So if you're getting them, that's good, that's John uh.
That's what it's supposed to do.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, y'all.
Good evening, have a good day.